Yes.
I will support that this evening through the discussion period.
We're live.
All right, call the meeting to order of the Rockport Select Board. The purpose of this meeting is for us to review and act on the town meeting warrant. So, the first item on the agenda is public input on non-agenda items. And do we have any public input, Bill?
None at this point.
Why, yes, we do.
On non- oh, okay, on non-agenda items, Doug.
I am very pleased to present to the town and to Bill Post our first check for the memorial bench program. This check for $5,000 and it's going to be from the Olenek family for our first bench. I told Bill that we would have this donation before the end of this fiscal year so we can zero out that line. And I think this is going to be a great program. We have another bench on order and we really have money to pay for it now. And we're hoping that this will continue to be a good program going forward. So I'll get this to Bill tomorrow and we're all set.
That's great.
Thanks.
Well done.
Okay, anything else? All right, then we will move into amendments to the agenda. And I would like to suggest that, well, let me start out by saying, as you know, in the past, we have taken each article separately in terms of consideration and action at this meeting in the past. But this time around, Bill had suggested that we could just do it if we chose in one motion. And so what I would like to do is, I would suggest that we remove Articles Three and Four, which are the two citizen petitions, from the overall motion and also Six, which is the provision that we had supported with respect to parking. And that doesn't mean, of course, that we're not approving those or whatever. We just, I suggest that, similar to a consent agenda, that we simply take Articles Three, Four, and Six and address them independently instead of with one motion. And if the board is inclined to, we could act on the other articles in one motion. Is that right, Bill?
Yeah, well, just to clarify, the board, when you get to the action items, the first action item is about the two citizen petition articles. So you could certainly discuss those.
Right.
And then when you discuss the town meeting warrant and act on that, you certainly can pull off any individual warrant articles at that time as well. You don't have to actually list that, you know, as agenda items, so.
Amendment to the agenda.
Yeah, it's kind of, it's kind of part of the town meeting warrant is that, you know, if there are any that need discussion or need to be, you know, if the board acts on or wants to take them off the warrant, then you can do that as well, so.
Okay, we hadn't had it this way before. I just wanted to make sure we didn't miss the opportunity. If, for example, we might want to discuss Articles Three and Four, but I have a proposal with respect to Article Six that I would like us to discuss. And I didn't want to miss the opportunity to do that.
Yeah, no, you can, any of the board members, when you get to Action Item B, Act on Town Meeting Warrant, you certainly can, you know, voice your opinions on any of the articles or have questions on any of the articles.
Okay, well, then I, given that, then I don't, I personally don't have any amendments to the agenda. But it will act according to what Bill just suggested. Does anybody else have any amendments to the agenda? No.
No, the only other article that I might want to discuss is the Article Sixteen, which is the fireworks.
Okay, okay, fine. So we'll just make sure that we cover those. Okay, so hearing now amendments to the agenda. The first item we have under action items is the Act Place the Citizen Petitioned Articles on Town Meeting Warrant. And I have some comments I want to make, but I'd like to open it up to others first.
Well, should we, just from a process standpoint, should we cover all our comments? Because I too have comments. Should we do that in the discussion phase of the motion?
Yes, I'm sure, certainly somebody can make a motion in a second so we can move on to the discussion phase.
And move the board place the two citizen petitioned articles on the August eighteen, twenty twenty town meeting warrant as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Because we don't, now this is discussion, but we don't have any discretion on this, right?
That's my understanding.
Yeah.
I mean, the petitions were done by the book. They were certified by the book, so.
Right, so this is their right.
That part's a formality.
Yeah.
That's my understanding and that's the case, right, Bill?
That's correct.
Bill, I've had a couple of people ask about the retroactivity, if that creates any legal problems with these petitions.
I did have that answer from Phil last week. I don't know if I can find that quickly, but let me see if I can find that quickly.
I might be able to find it, you know, it's, it wasn't all that crystal clear, if you ask me.
Yeah, I mean, there's obviously, they've written, the two petitions are written differently in terms of their retroactivity. You know, one is back to March one of twenty twenty and then the other one is forty-five days prior to the enactment of this amendment, which is interesting.
Okay, so I have, I have the town attorney's statement here. And I can certainly read it. Basically says that if a restriction is approved by town vote after an application has been approved by the planning board, well, the question is, does it override the planning board decision and/or impact that applicant's ability to proceed with the approved application? In other words, can the restriction be retroactive? And if so, for how back, how far back in time? His answer was, if an ordinance is amended while an application is pending, i.e., in the process of being substantively reviewed by a board, the general rule is that the original ordinance applies unless the new ordinance amendment contains a retroactivity clause. Such retroactivity clauses that apply to pending applications have been upheld by the main Supreme Judicial Court. The law is not as clear whether such an amended ordinance could apply to projects that have already received all required approvals but not yet completed and whether or not a project has vested rights in the approval. But it is important to note that there is a specific prohibition on a municipality from attempting to nullify or amend a municipal land use permit by subsequent enactment, amendment, or repeal of a local ordinance after a period of forty-five days has passed, after A, the permit has received its lawful final approval, and B, if required, a public hearing was held on the permit. So then the next question was, what would happen in this instance? One or more of the ordinance revisions are approved by voters, but the citizens' article restricting, essentially contradicting the now revised ordinance is also approved, which one prevails? So this question was in relation to the citizen petitioned article.
Yeah, and that's a different question or concern. But this sounds like, I mean, I guess I'm wondering what do, so if we approve this, I mean, it's one thing to say they got enough signatures, but it's a different matter if there, if this petition is essentially not legal.
Well, again, you're not approving.
I guess then the question of whether it applies to the hotel or not will be a subject of later interpretation. We don't have to decide that today.
That's correct. The only thing the board can do is really vote to place these on the town meeting warrant because, as Jeff or Mark had said, they've met the requirements by law and the town's charter to get the required number of signatures and they worded the articles correctly. So it goes to the town voters to decide.
Well, maybe worded correctly. I mean, if the retroactivity is, like, the one that refers to the forty-five days seems to be intentionally worded to address what Phil referred to, the one that goes back to March one, twenty twenty.
But I think that's mostly in reference to the zoning board of appeals period two with forty-five days from when a decision is final. So the decision for the hotel project, which obviously these are aimed at, the decision for that was the end of, what, the end of May was the final approval.
Yeah, I don't have Phil's thing in front of me, but, okay, I guess I'm just questioning whether, whether there's something inherently illegal in one of these, at least one of these citizen petitions, because they're proposing a retroactivity date by the March one, twenty twenty, that isn't allowed for main law. So the day to decide that, so.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's not today's decision really to.
Well, if we're putting it on the warrant and it doesn't pass legal muster.
Phil has looked at these, Phil has looked at both of the wordings in this, in these articles, so.
And he says they're okay, but.
He says they worded, yes.
Yeah, and then, as we said, whether or not they apply to the hotel or have retroactive effect to the hotels is another issue for another day.
Right.
Assuming they passed.
Right.
I hope to heck that they don't.
Right, we've got to record them.
Did anybody else want to make any comments on these two citizen petitions?
Deborah, maybe if you just call on us, we'll weigh in.
Okay, yeah, and I definitely want to weigh in, so I'll save myself for last. So Doug, did you have any comments?
I don't at this time.
Denise, other than.
Other than what I said at the planning board and what I'm saying here, I feel like, you know, I feel strongly that we can't treat businesses and proponents in the town who, good faith worked with us and then pulled the rug out from under them.
Right, okay, Jeff?
Yeah, as we have noted here, obviously, the two citizen petitions are targeted directly at one specific project, that being the hotel in downtown. I would actively oppose either of these two proposals as they stand. I believe that the developers in good faith went through the proper process with the ordinances at the time. It's a good project. It is definitely revenue that the town of Rockport needs in order to help control our mill rate and tax burden on individual property owners. It is the, one of the very few new projects in town in quite some time. And I am fully in support of the hotel as it is currently proposed and find these petitions to be quite targeted to a different direction.
Okay, thank you. Mark, do you have anything to add?
No comment, thanks.
Okay, yeah, and my comments are very much in the same vein as what Denise made at the planning board and what Jeff has indicated tonight. I think that Denise's comment to the planning board that these sends, these petitions send a message to any developer or business, that Rockport is not open for business, that sends exactly the wrong message, that we're trying to develop economic development here to, you know, to relieve taxpayers of the tax burdens that we hear from so many people that they are suffering, that I am rather, I mean, I find it insulting and offensive that they are applied retroactively when you have a property owner who purchased the property, who followed the process, who followed the ordinances and who did everything that he was supposed to do as a property owner, went through the planning board process, and then those people who are not happy with the outcome have decided to do an end run, end run around that process. I think it's disturbing. I think it's offensive. And, you know, the planning board spoke. They put a lot of time into this. They're the volunteers that the select board has, have stepped up to address these issues and that the select board has appointed to address these issues. It wasn't the select board who did it, but I think that, as a select board member, I think that it's a, it's a very bad idea. And if this can be done to the owner of this hotel, it can be done to any other property owner. Retroactively applying ordinances, retroactively to property owners is something that could be visited upon any of us at any time if this goes through and is upheld. Okay, if there's anything else? Okay, call the question.
No, I will, at this point, just make a comment. When I first ran for the select board, one of my goals was to try to help with the tax base of town. And I think it was a project just like this hotel that feels very much with that. And I agree completely with Deborah that it is very disturbing to have any sort of a petition like this that's retroactive. Again, because these people did do everything by the book. They were involved planning board early on. And again, it's just disturbing that individual citizens, when they do everything right, should have to put up with this, so I did want to weigh in on that.
And I would say, in closing, I, as a lawyer, I find it really offensive and disturbing because, you know, typically, typically laws are not applied retroactively. Typically, that is considered to be unjust, perhaps unconstitutional in some cases, in many cases. So how in the world Maine allows this is beyond me, after having been a lawyer for forty years. But I find that whole concept also offensive. Okay, anybody else? All right, call the question, Doug?
Yeah.
Denise?
Reluctantly, yes.
Jeff?
Very reluctantly, yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Yes, and only because we have no choice, I vote yes. All right, the next item for action then is to act on the town meeting warrant. We've already noted that there are a couple of articles that at least some of us would like to consider some separate action on rather than one single motion, that being Article Six and Article Sixteen. And I'd be happy to expound on Article Six. And maybe I should just go ahead and explain that. I think that the board should consider removing Article Six from the, from the warrant articles, from the ballot this time around, that being the provision which, which applies, which removes the applicability of the existing ordinances for the downtown district with respect to off-site parking. I'm sorry, go ahead, Denise, do you need to?
It's off-street.
Street parking, I'm sorry, yes, thank you. I'm sure you all watched the planning board hearing on point. And I think that, I think unfortunately that there was not, there was a somewhat misunderstanding on the planning board as to what the select board felt. And I think in the future, lessons for all of us that when something does go to the planning board like this, that the ORC should probably do an explanation and we should all make sure that this happens, that the ORC does an explanation that sets forth, you know, the reasoning for the ORC's suggested changes, our amendments to ordinances, instead of allowing the planning board to have to guess, kind of guess at it or to just hear clarification at the meeting itself. It's not really a fair or efficient way of going about it. But anyway, that's all hindsight. But I would just like to hearken back to the fact that this board, as we know, decided, we were in favor of the ORC going this direction for several reasons. And one being that we believed that it was the town's responsibility to provide for parking and not to put it on the, on the, the burden on the backs of some developers and not others and their, you know, inconsistent application and so forth. I think that, you know, we made it clear back in, what, January or so, when we went down this road, that we, we were serious about parking alternatives. A parking committee was, was put together by Bill Post and they have done some work and certainly done some work. COVID nineteen has intervened. And I think we said from the beginning that it was important to this vote that we showed, you know, some real progress on finding parking solutions before it went to the vote because we could, you know, perhaps, perhaps lose that. And I think that this is reflected in the three to three decision we saw from the planning board. Because of COVID nineteen and whatever other reasons, we just have not been able to make the progress that we had hoped to make. So I would propose that we not have this go to vote in this next election with the idea that we can always bring it back in November or we could bring it back next June. And in the meantime, really develop those alternatives and progress on other parking solutions in the town.
Just a comment as the planning board liaison. Now, I agree with you, Deborah. I attended the meeting in person and sat there. And unfortunately, I think even despite Denise's strong defense, I think it was really just sort of a lack of education on our part to the planning board of what we were trying to accomplish and why we were trying to accomplish it. And so I think what happened is, is when this came up on the surface, it just looked like the select board was throwing up its hands and saying, you know, we're not going to have any rules on parking downtown.
You can't do it, yeah.
And unfortunately, I think those three members of the planning board didn't really understand work that had been done by previous ORC's committee members and also the rationale for doing it. So if we can decide not to put this on the ballot this time around and do a little bit more education, both of the planning board and the public, I think that would be a reasonable approach.
Mark, did you have your hand up?
I did, thank you. I, you know, and I, I agree. I mean, it, we didn't have a lot of time. Things got filed up because of where we are with the COVID. And, you know, and I think in hindsight, perhaps, having the chair of the ORC attend the meeting perhaps and get a feeling for what we're talking about to better convey it, might be a chance too. And I'd say not necessarily moving it to November, but, you know, because we don't know what's going to happen between now and November. And set your sights on June, perhaps.
Yeah, I tend to think June too, myself. I know others have said perhaps November, but.
Yeah, we have a long way, we have a long way to go on this one.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would also support pulling it.
Yep, me too. I think that makes sense.
Okay. Um, okay, and then shall we?
Yeah, do we, how do we do this, Bill?
Yeah, Bill, should we pull it now or should we just make that as part of the motion at the end?
You can do it either way. You can either have a motion that approves the town meeting warrant minus Article Six, for example. That would be easy because then it's one motion.
Yeah, okay, if we want to do that, then let's discuss anything else that we want to discuss first also. I think Denise had mentioned Article Sixteen.
Yeah, and I, so Article Sixteen is a non-binding referendum. And then if we get, I guess if we get a majority of people or whatever we decide is what the citizens want, it then says we would go through the ordinance process. And I guess I still keep thinking, all, what I had in mind is that this would be bind, you know, that this would, this would be, we'd be done.
The direction from the select board was confusing, to say the least, because there are some members that want to, that wanted a question that basically would say, this is the final answer on it, that you'd have a ban on consumer fireworks. And then there were other board members that said, well, let's find, let's see what the public wants by having a non-binding straw poll, if you will, binding referendum question. So then you could determine what the feedback was, from my understanding.
And Denise, there's a, sorry, there is a default. I mean, in the, in effect, it says that if supported, the town will draft an ordinance. If not supported, the town will remain under current state laws. And so unless you had some citizen petition, you know, ballot citizen petition that brought it forward or whatever, if there was sort of an overwhelming sense of not doing anything, then it, while not binding, it sort of becomes the default.
The intent, the intent on this one, at least from, because I'm the person that asked, that we put a question such as this on this round of warrants. The intent was, because we did not get a valid petition in the first round and because there was some discussion amongst us all in our town, in our select board meetings, that, you know, we didn't necessarily have a feel for where the, where the town was. The intent was to put this on there to get some semblance of how people feel, how the voters feel regarding a ban or not a ban. If there's a feeling that a ban would be appropriate based on the results of this article vote, then we would go through an ordinance process and get the specific wording for the ordinance played out, at which point in time that would go into the voters for approval or disapproval.
And if you remember, through this process, I had drafted a, an ordinance that basically banned or didn't ban them, but had some language that regulated them. And then.
That's not, go back and try again.
So this, this straw poll came up and, you know, certainly up to the select board, but we also received several comments through Facebook and email when this topic was being discussed. And we had this topic up and asked for opinions from residents. And there was a, there was a mix. There were feelings on both sides. So I guess my opinion here is that it makes sense to ask the question. Then at least you have more guidance than just what we've received so far.
Yeah, I'm not saying, obviously, I wouldn't want us coming out saying we either support it or don't support if it, if it were to be worded as a ban. The vote on August eighteenth would be definitive, one way or the other. I just, what I'm, I guess, and I'll do whatever the select board and whatever the voters want, but I'm not necessarily interested in spending a lot of time with workshops figuring out how we fine tune the fireworks ordinance.
Right. While we're at this question here, let's get a sense of where the energy needs to go and then take action.
Okay, I'm fine with it.
Um, Denise, I think that you had raised some question about how the, to me personally, about how the Article Three and Four is presented in the warrant. Did you want to say anything about that or not?
Yeah, I did, because I just find it, when you, if you're just a voter coming cold to this, you know, you walk in and you're handed your ballot and the first thing you're asked to vote on, you can't tell that it's not something the town is proposing essentially until you get to some little fine italics that just say, this article was submitted by a citizen's petition. And then we have planning board votes and we've got all caps recommend. And this could be something we have no control over, but.
Let me step in, Denise, quickly. So if, can you see my screen? Do you, do you see the warrant that I have on the screen?
Yes.
Okay, so I've made adjustments to that.
Oh, good, yes, that's.
I was off Friday, so that's what you should say.
That's what I was so worried about. I thought if I were just reading it as, yes, perfect, that was my warrant.
And well, you'll also know, I mean, another, another comment too is that I have these under ordinance articles, and I probably should have opened with this, but I've tried to put. Um, and I probably should have opened with this, but I've tried to put headings on separate areas of the warrant, which we can do, like, for instance, this one above Article three, it says ordinance articles. If, if the board wanted, you could put citizen petitioned articles for those two.
I would like that, as long as. Yeah, because we're gonna, our hope is to get the word out to people that we don't want them to approve the citizen petitions. Now, obviously, any voter and any resident can make their own decision on that. That's, I'm not trying to say they have to agree with the select board, but I want it to be easy for them when they go into the ballot box to accomplish what they want to accomplish. And if they're feeling like they don't want to support the citizen petitions, I want to make it easy for them to find them.
Also, while you're at it, um, can we, do, do you see that there's a typo that says?
There's a couple in there, yeah.
Yeah, no offs, and the underline section, it says no offsite or shared parking or waiver or parking requirement should be approved unless it is supporter or supported by an independent rapid study.
Yeah, it should be supported.
Use in any. There's a couple more typos in this one, actually.
Are they typos that we made in transcribing this, or are they typos in the petition?
No, the petitions didn't have these typos.
Yeah, that, that typo was, was from us, um, from transposing. Um, so is the board in agreement that you want to change the, the, um, reference to that section to citizen petitioned articles, and then move ordinance down to the? Does that make sense?
I, Jeff likes it. Doug is nodding his head. Mark, I think, is, yeah.
If we can make that format change, that would be an excellent change.
Do you know, um, we should, we should fix whatever other typos there are too, Denise.
Yeah, um, so the, um, still on Article three, the third line up, facility is adequate for.
Hang on a second, let him do his.
Yeah, sorry, Bill.
Citizen petitions, citizens petitions. Petition, yeah, citizens petition.
It makes sense to do that now, or if there are many of them, to send them to Bill separately?
I think we need to do it now. All right, okay. Citizens petitioned articles, okay. I think, I think we need to do it now, because we need to prove it exactly as it's gonna be. Is that right, Bill?
Well, I mean, you, you could note them, but we can go through, if there's not many of them, we certainly could go through them and make them quickly.
Yeah, there's just two that I, two more in this one.
Go ahead, Denise.
So it's on the next page, facility is adequate for the proposed use and any shared uses, so A and D. And then the next line, and will not cause safety concerns, it says case.
Yeah, neither you.
Yep, that's it for that one. And we do appoint a moderator, even though there's no town meeting?
It, it is a town meeting. Anytime the voters get together, it is a town meeting, so a moderator has to be elected.
Okay.
Um, is there anything else that anybody has?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
Go ahead, Mark.
Articles thirty-one and thirty-two talk about the delinquent charges and, and percentages. Uh, we've had nine percent last year, and this is indicating eight percent. Uh, and I would be so bold as to say, considering how things are and how things might get back to a near normal, that we might even lower it, um, a fair amount. Uh, but I'm just throwing it out there because it's always been nine percent. We've gone, you know, the current year, we're in at nine, and this says eight. And the other thing about both of these was, we had talked about having verbiage in there, um, allowing us, uh, based on some emergency that might arise, to waive the percentage, um, for a month or two months or whatever.
Yeah, so I, I can answer, uh, those, Mark. So the, the percentage, um, is the maximum amount that is allowed by the state treasurer's office to be charged on unpaid taxes, so that does.
Did they change that?
Yes, yeah.
Because I think it, it's currently nine, I think.
It is currently nine. For next year, it's going to be eight, next fiscal year, meaning the beginning of July one.
Okay.
And that does change on an annual basis. It had, it hasn't for, you know, a couple of three years, but.
Yeah, it went from seven to nine, I think, uh, two years ago.
Yeah, and it's down to eight, um, for this year. Now, that doesn't mean that the town has to charge the full maximum that's allowed. You can charge any amount that you'd like up to the maximum. Um, so that's, that's one topic. And then the other question, and I had, um, had suggested that earlier, that, you know, maybe we had, we could put language in there as to, you know, um, deferring interest on taxes or waiving interest to a certain date. Um, state statute does not allow us to do that.
Okay.
So we can't, we can't do that, but hopefully, hopefully this never happens again in our lifetime, so or anybody's lifetime. But, but we'd have to address it, um, you know, along with the governor's orders, whatever they are at that point.
So, um, I guess, you know, I'll go, having heard that, I would say that, you know, I, I don't know how often people push it to the limit uh, before they get charged, uh, the eight percent in this case. But, you know, thing, times are tough, as I would say, and, um, would it be totally uncalled for to reduce that penalty? Well, that, that won't bankrupt us. I mean, if, I know it's no incentive for people to do it quicker, but, you know, it's just my thought.
I'm sort of reluctant. I mean, I appreciate the, the good place that comes from, but I guess because it's not based on need or any indication that, that they are having a tough time, it could just be, I'm, I'm just gonna drag my feet. I, I just feel like that ends up, we use an inordinate, you know, or disproportionate amount of town time trying to chase down late payers and, um.
Well, if, if you remember our meeting the other day, we haven't done that very well with number thirty-two either, so. So I'm a little hesitant to, uh.
Good point.
Well, the, the tax, the tax lien processes are pretty tried and true policy, uh, process, as is the lien process for wastewater too. So I, you know, I don't have, I can't give you facts and figures as to how many people paid late, uh, but I'm sure that there are a number each year. I mean, I see the, the thirty-day notices that go out, um, before the, before the lien notices go out. So I do see all of those and sign them, uh, sign some of them as the treasurer, once the liens go into place. Um, but, you know, certainly up to the board as to what you want to do for an interest rate. Again, you can charge up to the maximum or anything less than that.
I get, you know, part of what I was thinking is, I, I, and there again, until we see the list with regards to number thirty-two, um, you know, and how late they are, you know, how far back they are, you know, I, I really don't have an idea as to whether it's commercial businesses or private citizens that are late and what their totals are. So that would be very helpful for the next meeting too, by the way, if that isn't already planned.
Well, we're working on it, but it's not as easy as just printing off a list, unfortunately.
Yeah.
So, but I can, I can tell you that, that for the wastewater, there is a mix between commercial and residential, but it's mostly residential. And generally speaking, there, you know, um, ninety days, hundred and twenty days, I mean, it's not like they're years and years, because we do have the lien process there as well.
Well, so, and that, and that brings back to my recollection, and I'm not gonna straight fire, I promise. I, my recollection is when we got quarterly reviews in the past, they were only in the neighborhood of thirty-four thousand. So for me to see, and that's quarterly, three months, mind you. Uh, so my recollect, you know, I'm thinking if we get a thirty-four thousand dollar three-month printout, and we're talking three hundred and three, it's a little more than, than ninety or a hundred and eighty days, I'm thinking. But anyway, that's, that's as far off that topic as I'll go for the moment.
I think, given, uh, what Denise has said too, I think that, uh, because we can't, uh, you know, we can't make exceptions on a case-by-case basis, uh, I think I'm inclined to leave it at eight percent.
Yeah, it's okay with me, I just.
So is there anything else that we need to discuss on the warrants?
There's one more typo that I caught, Art- Article twenty-six. And it just is, has expand instead of expend.
Good job, Denise.
And I, and I wanted to comment on that article too, so I'm, obviously, it, it's pretty obvious what it is. But, um, this basically is in there so that if any budget article fails, because this is a referendum vote. So you don't have the ability to change the amounts, um, up or down. Uh, you simply, it's a pass or fail. So then, uh, we should have to, uh, we have to address any article that would fail, uh, at another town meeting. So we have to have kind of a continuing resolution to allow us to spend, um, for anything that may not pass.
So we'd have to have another town meeting within three months, basically?
Yes.
And, and these are, and, and these articles are ones in which we don't have, the select board says, you know, recommends this or that, or.
That's correct. By state, by state statute and town charter, the only articles that the select board can provide a recommendation on are budget article.
Tell us that before.
Yeah, which is why you don't see any recommendations under any of these business articles or any of the ordinance articles.
Is there anything else on any of these? Jeff?
Yeah, real quick, how about the, uh, the, uh, the petition ordinance articles there, or can those get the select board to hear, Nate?
They cannot. They cannot.
Can't, we discussed, yeah, I wish we could, but. Anything else? So can I, um, I, I would make the motion then. Uh, I move the board approve the annual town meeting warrant for August eighteenth, twenty twenty, with the exception of Article six, and renumber the articles accordingly.
I'll second.
Um, discussion, before we go further, is that, um, acceptable format, Bill?
Yes, that works fine.
And, and just for clarification, that will capture the edits and changes you've made?
Yeah.
Citizens petitions, the recommended, that sort of thing, okay.
Right.
So, no, I did, there was, and forgive me if we're in the conversation period, but there was something when I was looking through the, the for and against with like number three, where it says zero, four, six, against, and then it says recommended by it.
Yeah, I've, I've changed that, if you look on the screen, Mark, or I know you're.
Oh, it didn't pop up on my thing, sorry, Bill.
Yeah, no, it says, I've changed it to say do not recommend. We have the votes listed as the same.
Perfect.
Zero, four, six, against, zero, abstain, do not recommend.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, call a question. Doug?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And I, yes.
Who seconded that? I missed the second.
I did.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Okay, so, uh, next, um, next on the agenda is simply the announcement of the future meetings. June twenty-second, twenty twenty is our next regular select board meeting next week. And Bill, at this point, would you like to, um, um, mention what you had mentioned to me about the, uh, in-person meeting?
Sure, I can do that. Um, so there was a question about whether, uh, in-person meetings could happen without the public in physical attendance to the meeting. And so heard back from the town's attorney, and the answer is yes, you can have a, an in-person meeting of the select board without having the public in attendance. Um, however, you would have to have them, have the public, um, uh, through the Zoom app, so you could invite the public that way, so if they could send any, an email, for instance, to me, to the invite, and then they would get it that way. The problem we would have is that the, um, live stream is thirty seconds behind generally the, the actual live meeting. And so we would, it would be very cumbersome to do that. Um, we'd have, we'd have, um, gaps, if you will, or a delay, so that there would be confusion, I think, between the actual live meeting and when people are either commenting or trying to comment from the public. So there's, there's that.
Well, I have to say the planning board format worked out pretty well, you know, with the planning board up on the stage, you know, in the main opera house room. Um, you know, it, that felt, and people kept face masks on the entire time, and.
The other, the other comment there that Phil had too, which for some reason, um, I didn't realize, is that public buildings are, um, under the same auspices as retail establishments when it comes to the number of people in a, in a room based on, based on square footage.
Oh.
So we would be limited, um, I think it's five people per thousand feet. So we probably broke the law last Thursday with the planning board public hearing.
We can't do fifty.
So what's the gatherings of fifty all about?
If you have a big enough space. So if you go to, you know.
Ten thousand square foot.
Right.
So in the room where we normally have our, um, our board meetings, then we.
You couldn't, you couldn't have, you couldn't have five anyway.
What's the square footage of the upstairs?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Yeah, that's a trivia question.
Yeah. So I think the.
Bill, do you have a, do you have a? If we were to do a in-person gathering of this group right here, do you have a proposal on the format?
Um, I don't at this point. I think that it would be too difficult at this point to do that.
Okay.
Okay.
Because, because of the restrictions that are in place. Uh, and again, I didn't, for some reason, I missed the fact that we, the public buildings have to follow retail establishment.
Which makes no sense. Well, I don't know, who's, who knows what sense anything makes?
Well, it's based on the space requirement, so, you know, I, I understand it.
Well, what does fifty apply to? Outdoors and?
In larger, larger buildings.
Private gatherings, like a wedding, I suppose, if it were in some private spot, but not in a public spot.
Oh, that's a good.
So for this, for our select board meeting next, I, what I'm hearing is, by default, our current format would be maintained.
I think that sounds better under the circumstances.
Yeah, and the Zoom did not work well for the planning board.
Yeah, we did, we did have technical difficulties with Zoom during the planning board hearing, so unfortunately, because Richard Remsen, the chair of the O R C, was zooming in, um, and he just, it was very difficult, so. So yes, I would suggest that we continue on with Zoom meetings for the select board for the time being, until things change.
Okay.
Okay, I think that sounds good.
And the state of emergency was extended till July eleventh, so we have, I believe it's thirty days after that, that we can still continue the Zoom meetings.
So our next meeting then is July, uh, thirteenth. And, um, we can either, we can either make a decision later, or we can, or you said that, that July thirteenth can, even if it's lifted on July eleventh, could be continued for thirty days, so July thirteenth could be by Zoom too.
Yes.
Well, perhaps we should just, I mean, I, I, it sounds like we should do June twenty-second next week, uh, Zoom, and July thirteenth, maybe we should just say as a default that that continues to be Zoom, and we can always change it if we decide to along the way.
Yeah, if situations change, then we certainly can, if the restrictions ease.
Yeah. Okay. Um, I think, uh, I think that's it, unless anybody has any other matters, um, you need a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, uh, Doug? Call the question, okay. Yes, Denise?
Yes.
Jeff?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
I go, yes. All right, nice seeing you all.
Yep, see you all next month.
Okay, thanks.